I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we please remain standing for a moment of silence for Kevin Boe? At this time, we will move to student and staff recognition.
Good evening, everybody. We have a lot to celebrate tonight. Two teams that are undefeated state champions. So first up, in only their second season playing esports, it is an honor to introduce to you the 2023 undefeated League of Legends state champions. It would be. Okay, but before, before we do unified, we're gonna clap and cheer for League of Legends state champions. So will the coach, Dave Carnavale?
I'm here, but they're not.
None of them?
None of them, yeah.
Beth, flip flop, let's do.
All right. So let's move on. Okay. So it is with tremendous pride and pure joy that I introduce to you the 2023 Division II undefeated Unified Volleyball state champions.
It's okay, it's okay, just keep going.
So before I recognize this, the team, I just want to recognize the parents of these guys. You've done such a tremendous job raising your kids. They are the nicest, kindest, most compassionate, caring, helpful, fun, and oh so funny kids, besides being great volleyball players. So, so thank you, parents. So now I'm going, first of all, Haley Gattinella, can you please come on up? Haley is the head coach of our unified volleyball team. So now I'm going to call up a team, our team announcer. Someone who kept us up, kept us laughing, and always believed that we would win. Right, Vaughn?
Yes.
One of, one of the situat coaches approached me and offered me a million dollars for that kid. I said, "No, he's ours and he's not for sale." So ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to introduce...
Vaughn Cowell.
You say Vaughn!
It's kind of a thing we've done all year, and I think it's inappropriate to do it now. Everybody, when I say Vaughn, you say Cowell. Vaughn.
Cowell!
Vaughn.
Cowell!
Vaughn.
Cowell!
One more, everybody, as loud as you can. Vaughn!
Cowell!
Vaughn, congratulations.
Just so you know, during every single game, no matter who scored a point, Vaughn would be the one yelling, "Will, if I say Will, you say Dwight", and he did it for everybody, which kept us laughing. So Vaughn, come on up, can you come introduce our team?
Is there garbage that I can throw a piece of gum in?
Yeah, here's a cleanup.
Hi, my name is Vaughn, as you all know. This season was such a wild ride. And we played so well in every game. Our work as a team really led us to the state championship. If not for every single one of you, we would not have won at all. Thank you all for your wonderful performance and teamwork this season. And now, let's introduce the members of our state championship team.
That's how you're talking to the mic.
Abby Hallstall. Cyrus Boustey.
Is Cyrus here?
I don't think so.
Lauren Powell. Robbie Sustey.
Congratulations, thank you.
Landon Holman. Billy Cook. Emma Howard.
Is she not here?
Luke DePert. Luke Davis. Gianna Deseswey. Wendy Ryan. Andrew Coon. Brayden Hui. Kostin Kaziska. Alana Medina. Jonathan Oda. Scott Rafferty. Madison Rose. Michael Salkis. Paige Strickland. Willie Takowski. Emily Violet. Julia McHulsey. And last but not least, our head coach, Haley Gattinella.
Thank you, Vaughn.
Okay.
Is that it for tonight?
Yes, yes. Could you wait one minute, because I'm gonna recognize some more kids.
But I'm dying to get home to...
Okay, go ahead. Bye. Okay, let me see, bye. Okay, and now for the group. In only their second season ever playing esports, it's an honor to introduce to you the 2023 undefeated League of Legends state champions. Try again. Coach Dave Carnavale. All right, good night. Okay. Nicholas Prescott.
Nicholas not here.
Nicholas not here. Adam Harris. Zach Jeffrey. Taylor Hill.
Oh, you were supposed to get down there. Oh, well, you weren't.
Just waiting.
Sarah Brennan. Hayden Hero. Haley.
DeJulio.
DeJulio. So congratulations to all of you, we're so very proud of you. So where do you guys go? Mario Kart now, right? No?
No, they're not the Mario Kart, they play real games.
So what, what season do you go, are you playing now?
Yeah, we have Mario Kart, Robby.
Oh, but these guys don't do...
No, they play League of Legends, Big Brother.
All right, well, congratulations, state champions, nothing better. Did Robbie leave? Bye, Rob. So I think you make the announcement, you're welcome to stay if you want for this whole thing, but you're more than welcome.
Like, do you know, like, what it's about?
The school committee meeting? There is an agenda, you wanna read it?
I don't know.
Oh, I know.
Thank you. Who's cute little boy is that? Did you see him? How cute he is.
No. Yo, I'm so glad you...
He's so good.
You were gone, honey.
Bye, Robbie.
Bye, Robbie. So superintendent's report, we talk about money, who needs a leave of absence, athletics, cell tower, that kind of stuff. Rating policy.
Is it around, like, I wonder if someone...
They are the cutest team. Okay. Hold on a minute, so in a minute, we'll be on number six. Give it one second. And talk right into the mic so that...
Mic's on, people.
We don't need to do the updated minutes, right? Still, because the minutes that you handed out tonight...
The one I handed out tonight is the correct one.
Okay.
Okay, so just say as presented tonight.
Okay.
Yep, and then, then the not approved.
Perfect, I just wanted to make sure. So move to approve the open meeting minutes of November 1st, 2023, as presented tonight. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. Six, zero, one.
Move to approve the minutes of the executive session meeting on November 1st, 2023.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. Six, zero, one.
Move to approve the minutes of the open meeting on November 9th, 2023.
Any, uh, all in, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. And number eight.
Move to approve the monthly bills dated November 1st, 2023 to November 30th, 2023 in the amount of $755,813.71.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Did I get a second on that? Oh, you're so soft. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Director of Finance report, Budget Finance.
Just a quick update on the audit, it's going well. We filed an extension just until January 31st as a precaution. We have been working diligently on the budget, have our first budget subcommittee meeting this week. And I provided an operational review update, been doing some cash forecasting and trying to optimize the amount that we can use for investment. And I believe that's, that's all I have.
I'd like to say congratulations in your report on the operational review that you had an 85% reduction in UCOA era's this year versus last year. So I know that's huge just because of the amount of time that that took to make all those corrections. So fantastic.
I appreciate that, but I've, I've been here such a short time, I contribute all of that to Ann, really. She's done a really great job.
Great job.
Any other comments? Superintendent's report? Any questions or comments? Did you want to say anything?
Move to approve the Assistant Facility Director contract as submitted in the packet.
Second. Any discussion?
You can, you could have moved the generic contract, there's no names, we are not actually...
We're just approving the contract.
The general contract? Yeah, it's just the generic contract. The last one.
Oh, okay. Do I need to read?
Yep.
Okay.
So I, I just have one question on it. So if we're not approving it because we have negotiated a specific dollar amount with an individual, can we possibly leave that paid annual salary of sort of more flexible than the number that's in there?
You have a superintendent, a maximum, so you might...
Okay, but this doesn't say that, it just says shall be paid an annual salary of, and then there's an amount. I'm just saying, can, can we make it be more flexible?
Or up to?
Yeah, like up to that, I mean, what if...
Why don't you make that public?
Well, so I'm not saying anything out loud here.
Once you approve it, it's public.
Right, that's why I'm saying, instead of the way it's written...
She's saying it doesn't matter, once it becomes public, then the person knows that we can negotiate up to that price.
Do we know when this person's gonna get fired or not?
No, we haven't, we haven't started interviews yet, but on our last meeting, it made sense to have a contract to be able to present to someone, and then you would approve that, then you would approve that.
So you have something to show them.
Is there a way to put in here, not a fixed number, but something like compensated to the current rate of that? You know what I'm getting at. Mark, you do...
Or NTE, not to exceed, not to exceed a certain amount.
Once you say a certain amount, then everybody knows that certain amounts, you again...
Then that's what they're gonna ask for.
Can we present it without the amount? It's the terms of the contract.
Because we have to, we have to re-approve the actual contract anyway, so can we just leave this blank?
Once you appoint somebody, once Rene appoints somebody, you open up a group...
I mean, you're taking away all your negotiating here, not that I'm trying to hire somebody under, under what they should be paid, but this just seems ridiculous to put a number in here.
But she has to present something, she has to know that we agree. So what, what she's saying is, can she just pull the number off and we approve all the other items?
So that way, when she has the interview, she can say, "Listen, we're gonna negotiate the salary, but this is guaranteed." Yeah.
So we're just, so that's going to read, "The administr, the administrator shall be paid an annual salary", period, we can fill that in.
To be determined.
To be determined at a later date.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's all I'm asking.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, can we amend that motion?
So moved.
Is that good enough? And then I second the amended motion. So all in favor of the amended motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions.
Thank you. Is that good? Thank you.
So six, zero, one.
And move to approve the leave of absences as requested in the packet. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Athletics, approval of boys hockey, hockey out of state tournament. Hi, Coach Ann Pennants. This is number 11 in your packet. I know there is some discussion.
There's two different requests, right? One is for the actual travel, one will be another agenda item for the cell tower funds, is that right?
Yep. So the first one is approval for... Just to go to the tournament. Okay.
Okay. So I move to approve the boys hockey out of state tournament as requested in the packet for out of district field trip form.
Is that you?
Amy Cook, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Seven, zero. So now the second, approval of the cell tower funds for the boys hockey team. Number 12. So I know there were some questions for this item. Did you want to start?
Oh, I didn't know if we needed the motion first and then...
Oh, all right. Oh, well, no, you want to discuss, can we discuss first?
Make the motion and then discuss.
All right, go ahead.
Okay. So move to approve the cell tower funds in the amount of $5,800 for the PHS Boys Hockey Team to participate in a winter tournament being held in Maine as presented in the packet.
How come that's wrong, that you just quote, isn't on this written?
It's on number...
It's all the way in the back.
Why isn't it on this? That's just to go out of state.
Yeah, it's on page 36.
Do I, do I have a second, just so we can start to discuss?
Second.
Okay, discussion.
So I've got a couple of questions, I don't know, Pat, do you mind if I go? So, um, for you guys, I just wanted to ask a few questions, if you guys don't mind. One is, can I ask about how much, because I know that you guys have a booster club, correct? Can I ask about how much those, uh, the booster club has in the account? Okay. So the reason why I bring that up is just because if we look at the overnight trip form requested that we received tonight, it says that students will be provided transportation, hotel stay, plus nights and meals for the three days. Families will provide one night hotel and activities. The bus driver will transport from hotel to the games to the dinner. But then, if we look at where it says accommodations, players to stay with the family. So I just have a couple of questions. One is that I see also that you only have four chaperones in here. Are the parents considered chaperones as well, or no?
Yeah, sure.
Chaperones, I mean, I don't know.
Just hit the button.
All right, for chaperones in terms of coaches, it'll be myself, Coach Pasha, Coach Duver, and Coach Sawaya. They're gonna be attending the trip themselves, but as far as chaperones, I want them to be kind of an overall layer of just accountability. I prefer the kids to stay with families, that's the second layer of accountability.
Right.
I think that kind of is a safer bet and things like that. We also have, the, the whole thing's gonna be planned from top to finish, uh, top to bottom. Whereas transportation, there's gonna be a team bus, so everybody's gonna be traveling together as far as coaches and teams. We'll have parents up there with vehicles too, for other purposes, to get around emergencies, things like that, and also to and from games, that they'll be with the parents. The bus is gonna basically be official team travel. Travel up there, travel to the games, travel back from games, it's the same way, we would basically apply it over here.
Okay. Are parents gonna be on that bus as well?
No, it'll be just coaches and...
Just coaches and students?
Yes, that's, that's the plan, so...
So is there a breakdown for the amounts? Just because of the fact that we don't see that many times for meals to be provided for the students? And usually with other coaches, with other athletic events that I know of, is that usually with parents being involved, usually parents foot the bill for the food. So I just want to find out about how much is, like, the breakdown?
Do we have the amount?
Yeah, I don't, I kind of just, I think you're gonna add, it's like, I think it was like a hundred dollars for like the five or six different meals for the students. So I mean, I know the booster clubs, it's something to take into, but the booster club, you know, has markets that's to cover.
Okay. So around a hundred to, what, 250, 300? Give or take?
Well, I just think, like, if you mean what will it be?
Right, for the meals, just because, okay. Because I do agree that you guys need to go on this trip, I totally agree. I just don't know if the amount with everything that's included, you know what I mean? Just, we've already spoke about with cell tower funds, about how we were trying to curb that previously at other discussions, so I just want to make sure that we're getting the best bang for the buck for the cell tower funds, if that makes any sense.
And, and as like it's unfolded, because it's, you know, a process to do it, like really, the amount that I'm ever really will make money from that.
Okay.
We are working on a policy that will help us fine tune what we can and can't afford to pay for because we are spending on our teams more than we're bringing in every month. But you see the benefits of these kids going out of state to compete because then they get noticed and recruited, and so it does, it is well worth it. But, right, it's an, it's an important fact that we are working on trying to fine tune what we can and cannot afford to pay for with our cell tower funds. Um, so what he's getting at is typically we don't pay for meals or parents. It's usually just completely the team, the kids. We pay for their transportation, their registration, I don't know, I guess registration fees into the tournaments. And their, and the coaches' hotels.
The bus travels, the most expensive is the part of the trip, but I think that's probably the most important.
My only concern would be to, to set a precedence, but if, to paying for things like the meals. But on the, on the flip side, we do have a policy being created that's gonna help us in the future. So I'm kind of torn, we don't have that policy yet.
Their policy really only... But I also agree that they need to go on this trip, I just don't feel that we need to pay for the meals, if that makes any sense.
It would probably be, it would be half, half of that, right?
It would be 600, because you pay 600, we pay 600 for the meals. So it would be deducting 600, not the 12, right, because we split.
Right, so it would be 5200 then.
I have a question, how much is the transportation? Because if, you should have, that's a hard number by now, right? How much was, just the bus?
It's 5600.
Oh, so the, the bus alone is what you're requesting? So if we paid half of the bus, Mark? Half of 5600.
Half of, 2800? Yeah, right.
So the bus, our half of the bus, I'm trying to back into this, would be 2800.
I think we, Pat, you're done, I'm sorry?
I am, thankfully.
I think not only the meals portion, but I also feel like we shouldn't contribute anything to the parents. We're not, like, so the hotel, the parents are paying for one night, but what about the other? And then the other night we are paying for. We're paying for, right? Two nights total, correct? So there is a night that we're paying...
By splitting it with the kids, so like, we're paying for a kid, they're paying for the... It's just an easier way than saying, "We'll pay for half a hotel room twice." I don't need to speak for you, but I'm trying to envision, it's like saying, instead of paying for a child's room, two halves, they're just saying, their parents are buying one and the kids are getting one. You know what I mean? It's just two halves.
Right, but, but if it was, if the parents weren't going, then you would have two kids in the room?
You can't really have...
If the parents weren't going, we still have to rent the rooms, but then we'd have to basically put kids together, and then I would request parents to be assistants as the floor. It's 21 possible kids, unless they're maybe actually so...
No, I'm only speaking to like...
Especially my team.
Were you going like a cross-country trip, like, the parents would pay for the hotel that was expected? And then kids that didn't have parents or like needed it, they'd have their hotel room paid for, but if a parent was going with their child, it was expected that they would pay for the entirety of the trip? I think that like, from like a...
We haven't, that has changed in recent years.
For students, but what about parents?
No, if parent, if parents have gone on those trips, we've, we've paid for them because they're, we're paying for the student room. So I know that was a practice in the past, but the practice has been that we pay for the room that the student is staying in, so...
So maybe this is coming... You can't just have a room filled with kids.
Maybe this is coming later in the meeting, when we talk about new policy. But in my mind, when we get these requests, I would like to see a budget submitted.
That should go in our policy so that they know ahead of time.
The bus is 2800, the four nights of a hotel are 1200, so that we can then see... Because right now, you're just asking...
that we can then see, because right now you're just asking us really for a blanket amount, and we're not trying to be difficult about it, but we, we have to be accountable to the taxpayer.
But that's our fault, because we, that's how we present it to you. We give you a blank form and you just fill it in.
Yeah.
So we need to be more clear in what we submit to you guys.
I think that's more of a suggestion from Pat for the policy, right?
That's definitely have to be a policy.
Right. But if, if you have those numbers with you tonight, you could certainly share those with us.
For, for, well, we have the meals, right? The bus is fifty-six hundred, and we also have, it's also fifty-six hundred.
Okay.
The bus is fifty-six hundred, but we also have to rent the, uh, bus driver, the hotel room for the two nights as well, so...
And you probably do have to pay for his meals.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think it's fair if we just take the six hundred out for the kids' meals, our half. I think it's fair for us to just...
Approve fifty-two hundred?
Or fifty-two hundred, yeah.
Respectfully, I'm just happy to take the kids on the trip, and I appreciate anything you're doing, so that's on behalf of everybody on the team too.
Well, we appreciate what you're doing, because I used to travel with kids when I was a high school teacher for Decca, all over the country. It's a big responsibility.
Yes.
But it's an awesome opportunity you're giving the kids.
I think it's an awesome thing. I've been trying to do for years with COVID and everything, and I think this is one of those things where this school's getting put on the map, because we're playing all Division One teams out there, and it's a pretty, pretty cool thing.
Awesome.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
All right, so I have a motion and a second. We're, we're...
So I remove, so I rescind my motion.
I'll rescind my second.
So I make a motion to approve the PHS Boys Hockey cell tower fund approval for fifty-two hundred.
I rescind my second.
Okay, your new motion was for...
To approve for fifty-two hundred for the cell tower funds to go for the PHS Boys Hockey Team to participate in the winter tournament up in Lewiston, Maine.
And now Beth, do you have a second?
Second.
All, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Now, bring home some good results.
Yeah. Good luck.
It's cold in the arena, otherwise I'd be there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What are we, on thirteen? Approval of the twenty-twenty-four school committee meeting dates, first Tuesday of the month.
Move to approve the twenty-two, twenty-four school committee meeting dates as presented.
Oh, wait, oh, I'm going by your, I'm going by the motion. The first Tuesday of the month is January second, wasn't there a discussion right now?
Yeah, it's on here. Is it, or change to January ninth?
Or change to Jan, January, I put that on, but it's just me. Do you guys want to change it, or?
I didn't know if you saw that or not, that was a...
Okay. So let's discuss. So, January second or ninth? Preference? I'm old and embedded by eight-thirty, so... I would say, why don't we make it the ninth? Because if people go away because of the holidays, let's give them a little buffer.
Hmm, I agree.
If you change it to the ninth, like, the box, you have to get something for them.
I was going to say, Mary Ann. Was it? Okay. Would you be here on the second?
Oh, I can't be here on the second.
Would I be here on the tenth?
No, on the second.
Yes.
But not the ninth.
But I can't be, but that's okay. It depends what's on the agenda. I think the attorney, if we're talking about what we were talking about?
We also talked about, it's going to be a very small agenda. The only reason we need a meeting is constantly for budget, so...
That was just a suggestion. That you be there? Yeah, so we have to move it to the, we have to keep it the second?
So keep it the second?
So that Mary Ann can be there. My, but this draft says January third.
The one I have says the second.
Oh, I've broken at the wrong, I'm sorry.
Below one?
Yeah.
So you know that, um, the May ninth is the Thursday? Um, because of the financial term? By the time we get to May, we can tell them, because it's just a general thing to put online and always change it.
All right, so we're gonna, I need a motion to accept the...
I already did.
Did I get a second?
I'll second it.
Before you second, we also, if you notice, they will move to six-thirty.
I did see that, yeah.
Do you want to keep that at six-thirty before you do an executive session?
Yeah, that's fine.
So from now on, all the school committee meetings are at six-thirty.
That's fine.
And yeah, that can change month to month. You need to change it.
It's just to get everything out for a blanket statement. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. Yeah, we had a motion by Aaron and seconded by Pat. Principals' updates. Ms. Grindell? Am I not on the right spot?
Yeah, I just didn't know if you wanted them to speak and present, or if it was, uh, my initial understanding was that it was included in the packet, but they're going to hear and answer questions if you'd like them.
Oh, yeah, no, I don't, if people have questions for them?
I have a question. I want to know about cake with the principal. And where are you getting this cake? Is it Shelley?
It's my mom. So, every, um, every few weeks I do a feedback form to the faculty, then I take the feedback and I then make it, and it's based on the faculty feedback. So, um, the items that you see listed are of those basically, they're given. They're given an opening, so... So the items that are presented, um, on your, um, agenda are basically items that derive from the teacher feedback form. So the first one, um, is the math peer tutoring program. I'm really excited about it. We have been really making gains in our literacy work, and so now we are focusing on our, uh, math work. And one of the consistence that I heard from the teachers was during that WEP four period, they were getting overwhelmed with students, they couldn't provide all of the students extra help. And so what I did this year was I worked with, um, math teachers and the SPO, and we created a math peer tutoring program. So students that are upperclassmen who are excelling in math are tutoring our, um, students who are in Algebra I and having some difficulty. It has taken off so well that we have the press to now make up in other subject areas, so we are working on it back. The second piece that came up on the feedback form was our ninth graders really looking for, uh, peer mentors from our juniors and seniors, and so we have started a peer mentoring program. Every few weeks during WEP four, we have eleven and twelve graders going to all of the ninth grade home bases and doing icebreaker activities and team building activities. As you can see from the data that I have reported, um, the peer tutoring programs have, um, students that have a higher academic achievement rate, um, less likely to be bullied, more likely to make better choices in high school and feel connected to peer. I felt that that was something that high school was really missing. We just had kids kind of coming in in ninth grade who made sure they were connected to an adult, and we've been doing a great job of connecting them with peer. This has been very successful. I would like to give a shout out to Linda Markey. She has been instrumental in helping me get this on the ground. The last one there, the cake with the principal, that came on the feedback form. Teachers sometimes feel, because there's a north and south building, that they don't always get to, um, interact. And so every couple of weeks, my mom makes the cake. I bring it in. We, um, hang out in my office. I get ten to fifteen different teachers every time. We mingle, we talk professional, we talk a little personal. It's been a great culture building activity. I have teachers asking, when is the next one? When's your mom making her cake? It, it took on a life of its own, so now I, now I just do it every few weeks, and it's been great for building the culture. And the last one, I just want to draw your attention to, and I will speak more about this in January, but I also serve as the literacy coordinator in this district. And I just want everybody to understand the work that's being done in this district is really, really instrumental, and Massachusetts Reading Association did reach out to me and asked me to present in April, um, at their conference. So Worcester-Worcester regional schools will be put on that. I'll be presenting, and we're hoping to offer, um, some opportunity for some of our teachers to attend the conference as well. Massachusetts is one of the leaders in literacy work, so it's really awesome that, um, our teachers go as well.
Thank you for sharing. I think this is awesome.
Can I make a motion that Amanda has to have cake with the school?
Second.
Yes, Aaron.
Amanda, I don't know if it's possible, if you can just get me, because I see that the PSAT scores and the SAT scores have constantly been moving upwards. Okay, I just wanted to make sure, so I just, didn't know if you could...
Dr. Plaza asked me to do a more comprehensive literacy output in January. I have all of the scores, I, I have all of the data trending upward. We are at seventy-one percent decrease in the number of students needing literacy interventions at the high school because of the work. That'll all be outlined in January, really.
Perfect.
That's why I was presenting.
Excellent, thank you so much.
I would just like to say one more thing.
I really want to see that data.
So, this is what I, I asked for this to be put on here, because I think as a school committee, we spend so much time at, so, talking about so many other things, but we don't necessarily hear from you and, and the things we're doing for learning, teaching and learning and experiences. So, this to me is really important, and not just for us, but for the public that happens to attend. They can hear this, so thank you. Now, do you want to share anything, Pat?
We're looking at RITAS scores, I'm taking, um, structured coordinators, initiate them to, um, full-based RITAS game session, guide, or, we're going to make a new seventh or eighth watch, depending on data, that we can start to, 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 to,
Great. Well, thank you very much for sharing. Any other questions? Thank you. Um, Capital Projects update. Hello, Steve.
So, quick update on specifically the middle school pumps kid. So, basically the pumps kid is the, there's two pumps that basically keep the building pressurized. One of the pumps has failed at this point. Um, where basically if the second pump fails at this point in time, we will not be getting water into the middle school. It is an immediate concern of mine. I did have a, a cost estimate come out that we discussed with the Capital Projects team. Um, I did have an, a number come back at 75,000 for a cost assessment. I reached out to Bob to have a discussion with him. That 90,000 is a, is a allowance. So, he's in Florida right now. He's supposed to sharpen his pencil when he gets back. Ultimately, we'd like to move forward with that replacement as soon as possible. Uh, also, the assessment is not apples to apples. Um, North, Northeast Water Service is, you know, basically implementing all the new filtration, the chemical, all that side of things and all the analytic, the analytics. Um, so, that is the main concern right now with the middle school with the pumps kid. And, and ultimately, since we had that meeting, it's gotten worse. We, we've now sprung a pinhole in the one, on the check valve on the one pump that's working.
Mark, hop behind you.
So.
So, to fill the rest of the committee in, this is one of those items. We have a redundant system for pumping water at the middle school and Steve has identified that one of those pumps has failed, which is why we have a redundant system, but it now means we don't have a redundant system. Um, that committee, uh, the Capital Project Committee made a motion to send forth to this full committee a recommendation that we authorize the school to go out to bid or, or to purchase, I guess, as this is an emergency, a replacement pump so that we once again have a redundant system and do not run the risk of not having water at the middle school. Steve has gone forward and gotten pricing for that. And Mary Ann, the way that this is written in the agenda, are we allowed to act on that?
Never put on your agenda.
This discussion action.
It says discussion and/or public action on the bottom, so we can take public action. Yes.
So, I would just say that while that is a large number, this is not specifically a luxury item. It's unfortunate these things go, but that's why we have redundant systems so we have time to react when something does go.
Correct. And, but ultimately, you know, this is the original pumps kid from when the building was, you know, put together in 2007, 2008. So, it has certainly met its life expectancy. There are also benefits to replacement of this pumps kid with energy efficiency, with VFDs. And, you know, again, we don't have any filtration on the middle school or any chemical implementation, which is, you know, moving forward extremely beneficial. Um, so, I recommend we move forward with this sooner than later.
So, can we?
Like ASAP.
Can we make a motion tonight? Like, what's?
What's the cap?
Yeah.
What's the?
So, is it not to exceed at 90 right now? And, and ultimately, in conversation with Bob this morning, he and, you know, I told him flat out that it needs to be lower.
What it come in as? I'm sorry.
It's a, it's a budgetary number of 90,000.
Oh, and they didn't propose anything yet?
I have a full memo. I believe, did we provide the memo in the?
No.
Nope.
So, the Capital Projects team has reviewed the full memo. Um, if need be, I can certainly forward that along to everybody for everyone to review.
And what it come in as?
90,000.
You know, so our budget's 90,000, but what?
That, no, that's, that's the, the memo that Northeast Water Service, our, our certified water provider.
What Steve's saying is he's going to try and work that number down.
Down, correct, correct, correct.
I thought you said that we, our budget was 90 and then you told them.
Nope, so he, nope. So, basically that the, the replacement pumps and all the new filtration and all the upgrades basically is a $90,000 budgetary number. Um, again, I got a cost assessment from Maroni and he came in at 75,000. It's apples to oranges, not the same. And ultimately, again, Northeast Water Service, we do pay them for our water service contract. I would hate to get a third hand in the pot and, and totally, you know, mess with the system.
Keep in mind, if the pump, if it fails and you have no water at the middle school, the middle schools close, so you can get water, not only for drinking and cooking, but for bathrooms. It's not like.
This is not a luxury item.
Yeah, no, this is, this is not a luxury item, right?
So, do we have a motion to allow Steve to?
Yes.
I have one question.
Yes.
Where's the, where's the money coming from? Do we have it anywhere?
We have to, we have to reorganize to find it. This is, this is an emergency.
Yeah.
So, I make a motion, Steve, the 90, Capit, 90,000.
To move forward with, uh?
We'd like to make a motion to authorize the Facilities Team to procure a new pump skid steer with a value not to exceed $90,000. Second.
Very good.
Well, this is an emergency.
As an emergency.
Yes.
Second.
We don't have any health and safety funding left from Ride, correct? I don't believe so. And if we do, we have a very small amount. So, we, we may have some funding that we can capture through Ride, but ultimately, we, we utilize that funding for our other pump house projects, the well project, um, and, and portion of that for the dust collection system. So, we can potentially have some funding, but we have to.
Write down your motion.
Is, is, is it worth maybe investigating because this is an emergency that could mean our schools stay open or not, that we could go to Ride and ask for some additional funding?
I mean, we could look at that.
Well, so, I mean, ultimately, it's, it's, Ride has the, the 500,000 for health and safety, but we've, we've basically, we've gone after that. We've been going after.
I think that would probably be a parallel action. I mean, I, I think he needs to move forward with obtaining this and then in parallel, we should shake as many money trees as possible for emergency funding.
Yeah.
So, let's deal with the first motion, which you so eloquently said and now is, you're going to write down. And do I have a second? Beth is the second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. All right, so that's done. Yes, I think we can try to find some emergency funding.
And Amanda and I can certainly submit something to, to Ride and, and see what their response will be back.
Now, we have a part B to your story here today.
What is part B?
Approval.
Uh, approval of the CTE, um, vehicle.
Yes.
Okay, so a little backstory with that. So, ultimately, the CTE, um, has two trailers with no vehicle to pull these trailers. The vehicles that facilities have right now, one of them, I will not allow out of the parking lot because it's not roadworthy. And the second vehicle is, has 115,000 miles on it. Um, that ultimately is our only good usable vehicle for facilities. So, ultimately, we give out our vehicle all the time for both of these programs to use, pull their trailers to other events and we keep selling ourselves short. So, ultimately, we would like to purchase a vehicle with categorical funds for the CTE program so they have their own vehicle that they can use and abuse and not facilities.
So, I have a comment to that. We're starting to go into a budget process. I feel like we're bleeding money at the moment. I'd like to put this off until we get a sense of where the budget's coming in in 20, in the next process.
This is my, and I.
I mean, is this an emergency? I feel like.
This is categorical money down.
But this is money that is, that is earmarked for only construction and only agriculture and it's money that was from, uh, I believe, I believe it was from over two years ago and it has an 18-month window and we're, we're coming into that window. So, we have to use this money for construction and.
So, the, so the money's there.
The money's there and it was not part of our budget. It wasn't any, anything that we had included last year. So, it has to be spent and it has to be spent in these programs.
Okey dokey.
Any other questions?
No.
Do I have a motion? Did you make a motion? Okay. Go for it.
Move to approve submitting an RFP for a CTE construction vehicle.
Second.
Any other discussion? Yes.
How much are we spending?
You're, all you're doing is going up to RFP and getting numbers from hopefully different, uh, places that make these vehicles. Once then you have the numbers, you would then have to approve the purchase.
Okay, thank you.
Just to go up to RFP.
Thank you for the clarification. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Thanks, Steve.
Can I, can I just ask, when's the Capital Project Subcommittee? Is that?
Do we have a meeting on the books yet?
14th, I think.
December 14th?
Yeah.
Okay.
What time is that at?
Oh, good golly.
What time is that meeting at, please?
Five.
Five per second.
Five.
Five.
All right, policy subcommittee update. You have one, two, three, four, five. Ready, go.
Move to approve the service animal policy. Second reading as presented.
Second.
We're giving that one to Mark.
Eileen's vocal tonight.
And he's, she's too soft. Any discussion on the service animal policy? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions.
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
I would love to see a little horse in this position.
No.
Look, Brett, Brendan's with me.
I know, I read it. I saw.
It's a dwarf.
Stop. No.
Well, some of the miniature ponies are smaller than some of the dwarfs.
They're miniature.
These are miniature.
Okay, next part, number eight, uh, letter B, number two.
Move to approve the cell tower funds policy as presented as a first reading.
First reading only. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mark. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions. Grading and reporting poli, oop, back it up.
Yeah, can we back that one up?
Yep.
We never had discussion.
So, I'm trying to find my notes. So, when you say, or we say, that we'll grant up to $10,000, so it's not, I get the total amount we have to restrict, but what happens if July 1st, Derek Sabatini, I'll pick on him, comes and asks for $10,000?
Everything, so even though we, that's the policy, everything's up for like school committee approval. So, if we want to make an exception, we can.
And, and.
Yeah, but, but the point, the point being.
You're saying if he uses it all and then no one else can use it?
Right. So, should, should each individual group be limited?
So, we talked about that, but the problem is that unfortunately, right now, the, the current policy doesn't have a, like a per pupil estimate. So, we talked about once we start to get a few requests and see like what the average per pupil, um, cost is, we then figure out like what a good max allowance would be like per request, like per pupil, because it's tough to say like, because some trips are larger than others. So, it's tough to say like you can't just max out a trip, a total trip cost, but if you can max out like a per pupil expense, that's what we could do. But we just don't have like any data on what that is right now.
Yeah, and my concern is we don't want everybody running, like today, we spent five grand of it already in just one tournament.
And that's the problem. That's why we're trying to cap it.
And that's the part that, that's.
Scary. Now, we just blocked half of the.
But the other elephant in the room is people have stopped fundraising as much as they used to because they know self-help.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Yeah.
I don't know if we say, music department, you've got plenty last year, but we're going to give opportunities for others because now everybody's.
So, they can always request it and we can just deny it.
Yeah, but I feel like you need to have.
I can't stop them from requesting it.
But I feel like we need to have like some type of procedure. I don't want to just say, well, mm, you've got some yes last year, oh, you didn't. Like, I'd rather have like a very specific formula to how we grant it. Just it's not biased.
I think the, I think to, when we were talking before with Pat, the form.
Well, she just said, yeah, we have to add that.
That they filled out, but also we should record how much each group is requesting.
I'm, I'm, can, can we see an anal, a yearly, maybe a five-year analysis?
And Pat, what you said, if we can add to what you had said, you said we, we need a breakdown, but it should say exactly how many students it's impacting. So, if it's five grand and it's impacting 50, they're asking for 5,000, it's impacting 50. We can get a per pupil.
That's what it, that's what this is allowing.
Yeah, directly from the breakdown.
But just when they submit the form, I think they can, they can best estimate to us, because I know when I used to plan my trips out, I knew how much the airline tickets were because I had to buy them, how much the hotels were that we were staying at and, and any fees we had to pay. So, if they could start attaching that to that.
They do that, like the, that request night, they had five sheets of paper with bills like as proof.
Okay.
They did, and he, and.
They, they had that in there.
They had the bus class, they had the, you didn't see it, Pat?
I didn't see it. I'm sorry.
No. It's okay. No, but what, but what you're saying is that, and I think the receipts are great, but I think a nice little concise form that we've created that says transportation, hotel, whatever.
So, it's consistent.
Registration fee and other number of students. You know what I mean? And then we can figure it out.
If we have all of that information, could we just say instead of like the max, we could just do like a percentage rather than instead of.
It used to be 50%. We used to pay 50%.
Do you say that we'll pay a quarter of it or we'll pay a third of it or something? Would it be?
So, it's, it's, it's always up to 50%. So, like we as a committee, like if they present to us 50%, we can say up here and say, we're only, we only want to approve 25%. Like, we don't have to approve 50. It's up to 50.
That might, but that, that's a great suggestion because if we, if we say we're only going to pay 25% of you, then people will stop fundraising.
Actually, maybe we should cut that down from 50. Maybe that's the way to.
Or you do, or you do 50%, but not to exceed, you know, 5,000 or whatever, whatever number is, or.
5,000's a million.
Yeah, but if we're only, if we're only giving out 10.
Right, not to exceed 100 per pupil or some.
Yeah, that's what we're trying to figure out.
The music program that they just requested.
Yeah.
If we've given them like 36,000.
Right, right. I mean, the struggle that we have is that it's sort of been cooked into the institution now because of the last five years. So, there's a bit of relearning that needs to occur, which is going to be hard. I mean, so maybe on the top of the form we put like, have you fundraised? The first question you're going to be asked when you present this is, have you fundraised?
You know why?
How much did you fundraise and, you know?
What fundraising activities do you have planned?
They did.
Like hockey had 15 grand.
Yep.
But if you have 15 grand, why aren't you spending your 15 grand to?
Well, they're, they're going to ask the same question of us, right? You have 75 grand. Why are you not spending your 75 grand, right? I know.
Ah, we're trying to spread it out so everybody gets to enjoy it.
I like your point, Brendan, and I think putting at the top, you know, have you planned any fundraising activities? If so, tell us about it.
I know hockey, I mean, 20 bucks of mine, they do car washes all the time. I can't go to Dino's without giving.
I don't say in no way to dispute that they're not doing it, but I think it would be important for us to hear it too, that they're, they're putting, putting up a little bit too and they're, they're putting some skin in the game. Because I think most of the law.
What other funds are available to use, like booster clubs or say the music associations? And how much are they putting in? I think that could also offset, you know, some of the costs because.
Because we should be the savings account for, you know, if you have 15 grand, then what else do you need that money for?
We should be the last, this should be the last.
Break glass option.
Renee is.
So, if I, if I may, I'd like to just make a comment and then add a, a clarification. I, I know that we've, we've been having this, this conversation with respect to the funds and I certainly appreciate it. Uh, but I, I put on the, the hat of the, you know, used to be principal and now superintendent. And I think all of this is very good information, that clarification part, we can put on the form, include the budget, per pupil expense. So, my, my ask would be instead of saying the per pupil expense will need to be included in the form, is that we can put that the, um, the requester will complete the approved form. And then what happens is as we go through the process, instead of you always having to change the policy, you can change the form. So, we can be very specific as we go through the process, once you approve the policy. The other side of it, I will say that fundraising was non-existent in 2021 and some of it started again in 22, that as we fundraise for students who play athletics and students who participate in music and students who participate, you're always tapping into the same funds. So, I would just ask you to be mindful of that, that if we say, are you fundraising? I can tell you that I know I've signed many fundraising forms this year. They are out there and advocating, but we're still catching up from COVID. So, I just say that I know we're looking forward, but also where we are is a reality.
May I say, this is a first reading. So, this, like this will go back to the, um, policy committee. So, if like your comments, everybody's comments, if you can send them to Renee or actually send them to Kyle, then we'll bring them back to policy committee so that when we look at this policy again at the next meeting, we can update it based on the comments.
I'll just add, I'll just add one positive thing we added. I think this was Renee's idea, but if they don't use the full funds, they have to give it back to the account.
Yeah.
And that wasn't in there previously.
Well, that's like an, an assumed, but it's nice to have it written.
Well, no, that, yeah, but it was not happening.
Because, Mark, the, the other thing, the cost of it is, so like every year I order the inclusion shirts either for the whole district or to back up what we already have. So, I, I have to make that request in June.
Mm-hmm.
So, we have the shirts by September. So, it was that thing that we, student activities can't pay for shirts for faculty, staff. So, I have to request because we use the plunge money for that, but, but I can't use that money for staff. So, I ask for, like if I'm buying for the whole district, I know it's going to cost $10,000. I ask for cell tower, like five, just in case. But when the bill comes in, I just bring the bill to Gary and Pacino and just say, half from Unified and half from cell tower. So, I never spend like what I asked for, but it never comes out of the account. You know what I mean?
Mm-hmm.
So, if we could do it that way.
Yeah.
What's the, because I know there was a prom thing. So, what's the bill, cell tower? So, we'll send the check.
You're saying it's not really a return. It's more it just never, you never expend the full amount.
It never comes out of the account.
Yeah, because I, I think we gave extra money last year for prom and they didn't use all of it or didn't even need it. So, now it's just sitting in their account instead of going back to the cell policy.
What was the timing of it? It wasn't prom, it was a winter ball.
Winter ball.
So, the, the bill had to be paid in January, but then come the end of the school year, whatever fundraising and everything happened, the, the class ended up with more money. So, the idea is why?
So, I'm going to give it back.
Why shouldn't that money come back into the district? We just came across this as Mary's working through the student activities funds. So, that's why it was a, if you end up with a positive balance and you request a cell tower for something, then it should go back to the district.
Mm-hmm.
So, that hadn't been the situation. And I don't know if that had happened before. No one looked at it. So, now that we are looking, but when you had to pay the bill in January, they needed the money right then.
But this is something that can be tracked from like an accounting perspective on your, yeah, okay. Now it's implemented.
You've never had this form either. Anne created this form, I think it was actually before you even started, Amanda. Anne and I created this form, so we could keep track of it and the request was something that was a little more.
All right, so this is a first reading. So, please send all these ideas to Kyle and she will forward them to, hmm, I guess the whole committee. I mean, not the committee.
Have any of these downed as we were talking? Did you?
I have them.
Code of conduct. All right, so now we're moving on to number.
C.
Letter C.
Move to approve the grading and reporting policy as a first reading as presented.
Okay, so again, this is a first reading, so recommendations and then we can correct and move on. Do I have a second?
I can just make a comment. The second page, uh, third bullet down instead of each quarter, that should read each marking period because the middle school is on trimesters.
Again, that's changed the policy for back.
Yep.
Any other suggestions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Seven, zero. Letter D.
Move to approve the code of conducts for staff slash student relationship policy as presented as a first reading.
Any discussion or recommendations? All in favor?
Wait a minute. I, I just have a question. And I don't even know if I really want to ask this question. But, um, staff and coaches communicating with students, does texting go in there? Please tell me, continue to text.
Does it, is texting communicated?
Yes. Can we text with students?
Can you legally text with students? Not, there's no law that says you can't.
Well, all I'm saying is I've heard, you know, people are like, oh, you should only email them. But I'm like, they don't read their email and they don't respond.
There's no law, but it should be done. There's a, there's an opinion that you need to capitalize. You know, like how you're texting and who you're texting.
And it's, and so, so if, if you're coaching and like there's a time change of practice or the bus is coming or, but it's the only way to immediately.
Contact.
And the kids respond immediately when you text them. If you email them.
Right.
Like the whole team didn't show up today because they didn't.
So, are you asking for guidance on what that, what the rules would be? Because right now, it's, it's written, as written, it doesn't seem like that. It's certainly frowned upon. Yeah.
But it's not illegal to do so.
But I think.
It's a valid question.
But I don't think that, because beforehand, I, unfortunately, I don't agree with you, Beth, just because of the fact that there has to be a way to track it because granted, you are texting, but there's not, say on their own personal cell phone, there's no way to track that. There's also, what's also preventing, say, either a student or a staff member to say, oh, this person, you know, whatever, especially nowadays. But there's certain apps, there's certain ways in order to go around that so that we can track that, about what's being sent out to students either through mass text, through the, there's certain apps, I'm sure Dave can come up with or knows about that can actually send out a blast. That way, we're still able to track it and not be sent out through personal cell phones of coaches. through personal cell phones of coaches, staff members, et cetera.
Well, then that's something that needs to be provided to every coach and.
And a lot of districts, that's what they're doing, is providing apps so that coaches aren't directly communicating with kids.
I just think that there needs to be some way to track it just to make sure that it protects both students and staffs.
This is going to be our policy, and we have to have that, then we have to make that a priority to get that out to coaches as soon as possible.
Right, provide all the coaches, all the, all the athletes, well, anybody, because I'm sure music needs to communicate with, it's how kids communicate.
It's daily, it's daily communication between coaches and players almost. So we need a system.
But it's sort of like also with Renee or whatever, there's, you know, when you send out the blast or whatever for the phone calls. I know that with my work or whatever, they have a text blast that they're able to utilize that sends it out to certain numbers or certain areas, like say if there was a threat or whatever, say at the airport, we get sent like a situational alert or whatever that's sent out through them, but it's still able to be tracked. So I'm certainly sure if Dave wants to come up and just speak about and try to find those.
Well, he doesn't have to come up right now, because this is a first reading.
I just don't think that they need to be using their own personal cell phones.
Again, send comments to personnel, to the policy committee, look at it.
Yeah, I agree, Beth, that's going to be hard unless there's a really good program.
Because there is no way to communicate with the kids.
There are apps, and we'll look into, we'll look into that and make sure that when the policy gets passed, that there is definitely a communication out.
Most of the sports teams, or a lot of the younger sports teams at least, use an app, but it feels like they each use a different one too, which is just brutal. And none of the kids look at it, so I mean.
And none of the kids look at it, yeah. But they'd have to be trained to say, that's what you do, or you're going to miss the bus because.
I hear you.
And they will miss the bus.
They will.
All right, so that was our first reading. Send all suggestions. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Graduation diploma system policy, first read.
Move to approve the graduation diploma system policy as a first reading as presented.
Second. Letter E. Any discussion? Recommendations? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Public comment.
Hello.
Just a couple of quick things. I recently had an occasion to, I had a very positive experience with our bus coordinator. It turned out to be positive because she's like highly on the ball, but what actually happened was I needed a change in a bus. I went to the website, I downloaded the form. On the form, it says if you have, if you live in Gloucester, you call this number or you email this email address.